Not, okay, they're not agreeing to the agreement.
Okay.
All right, quickly, because we got a good line. There was supposed to be a hearing today for abandonment. The hearing did not get noticed, so we're not happy.
Okay.
How many days you need to notice?
Uh, not long.
So we send it off into the next.
I think you need to send it for the second meeting in January.
Huh? All right.
But I didn't.
At eight AM this morning.
Thought they had that worked out.
Yeah.
At eight AM this morning, John McGraw told me that there was.
Yeah, we're streaming now.
They just told me that is.
We're streaming.
Damn. Yeah, I might be that way.
Bro gonna get a bandage?
We are streaming, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
We are live, Mr. President.
Are we live?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Baxter outside, I guess he didn't want to be here for the beginning. Okay, uh, we're gonna call the meeting of, um, December the sixth, uh, to order, and we're gonna ask that Supervisor Gerald Steen and, um, Will Sly.
Good morning, Trey.
That's who's playing, yeah, okay.
Let us pray. Father Lord, as we come to you this morning, we're just giving you the thanks and praise, Lord, for everything you do in our lives, Lord. The things that we take for granted, Lord, we know that it comes from you, and we just wanted to stop and pause just to give you the thanks and the glory. Father, as we, uh, make decisions for our county, Lord, we just ask that you would give us knowledge and wisdom, Lord, to make the best decision for our people, for Madison County, Lord. But most of all, Lord, we just thank you for being our Savior. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, we have to approve our minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, we have before you the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Board Minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, the board please approve said minutes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, our minutes have been approved. Um, I think next we have Concerned Citizen Jan Collins and her bunch.
Good morning, and thank you for opportunity to come and speak to y'all today and make our presentation. I have with me today Ray Ballantyne, who is the Chairman of the Business League this year, and then our Government Affairs Committee Chair Phil Buffington. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Phil Buffington.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Phil.
Hope y'all are doing well today. Thank y'all for having us here today, we appreciate y'all placing us on the agenda and in meeting with us today. And just to bring y'all up to date, and I know y'all already know this, but if you'll give me just a minute, uh, you know, we go through this process every year, we meet with each one of y'all, uh, we try to meet with some other elected officials, which we've done this year, we've met with most of the mayors, we've met with sheriff, and we've met with most of the legislative delegation. Uh, we have not been able to meet with all of them, but we have a breakfast coming up, so that that'll be good. Um, and what we do in this process is try to get information from y'all on what ought to be offered as some of the priorities for the county going forward in the legislative session. Well, we've done that, and we had a committee meeting, we discussed everything that everybody brought up to us, and it was a wide-ranging topics, as you would well expect, meeting with the mayors, with y'all, with other elected officials, and with the legislative delegation. And what we came up with through the committee, which has been approved and recommended by the committee, and then brought to the Madison County Business League and Foundation, which has been approved by their board, I will have to tell you, I do not have the approval of the Madison County Economic Development Authority yet, uh, I do expect that on Thursday, uh, do not anticipate a problem. Joey Deason was in our committee meeting, as well as some other members of that board, so we feel like they will be on board with this agenda. One thing I wanted to point out, we're keenly aware of the ARPA funds. We, we as a committee thought that that was really a big priority for the county, but everything else we went through kinda tied back to ARPA funds in a lot of ways. And so instead of putting another agenda item on here or taking something off, we felt like that could just be an overall concern for the county, and we would work it into all of this. But the priorities we came up with, and I think y'all have those in front of you, I think that's correct, uh, is one, and, uh, and I'm gonna explain each one of them if you will let me. The first one is Bozeman Road Project, uh, from Reunion Parkway up to Galveston Road. One of the reasons we feel like that needs to still be the number one priority is, it's been there for a couple of years, we have gotten a substantial amount of money from the state, we felt like if we moved that priority in any direction, it, it could have a negative connotation to the legislature, and plus, it is still a top priority for the county. So we felt like that needed to stay there. When you get into two or three, th- there were some issues about which one ought to be two and which one ought to be three. When we number these things, and as y'all will know this, when you look at priorities, there's always a line item that comes down. Just because something's in two or something's in three doesn't mean one's more important than the other, because we think both of those are equally as important to the county. So we could've both put them two, but then somebody would've told me I misnumbered. So we just have them one, two, and three. But those were the three issues that we felt were out there. One of the things that kept coming up was, uh, and this came up from legislators, we need information on what's going on with Reunion Parkway and with the Bozeman Road extension. And so that, that's one of the requests that we have is, is if we could come up with just a, maybe a one-page summary that we'd, we would be able to give to the delegation with this agenda at our meeting on December fifteenth, and, and I didn't point that out, but we have our legislative breakfast with the legislators on December fifteenth at Butler Snow. Uh, I believe all of y'all have received an invitation, if you have not, uh, I would like to extend one myself today on behalf of the Business League, and we would love to have you there to put, have input, uh, in that process too, uh, and provide information for the county. But what, what we really, uh, want to do is, is be able to provide that one sheet of information, and it may need to be two, I don't know, I, I will leave that up to y'all on what you feel like you can share and what we need to share, but we think that'll be helpful, because when we get to the other two priorities, we know y'all are doing a broadband study, and we can tell them we're doing a broadband study. And when it's appropriate, we can give them an executive session, I mean, an executive summary of that broadband study that shows what the county wants to do. And then the same thing on the water and sewer, we know that's being studied. I, I don't know if y'all have seen it, but, uh, Mayor McGee had done a proposal on water and sewer that's on our website, and we can certainly send you a copy of that if you would want it. But we understand that the county's looking at some of those issues too, and that there will be a study, and there'll be information available that we'll be able to come forward with in that instance too. And that's just providing the detail to the legislators, so we can be more effective down there in what we're asking for. At this point, what we would like, if y'all are willing to do it, is, is approve a resolution, adopting of the agenda as we've presented it, um, and then from there, we will go back and provide that at the legislative breakfast and move forward in a coordinated effort. I really wanna stress this, we do not intend to start going down to the legislature and lobbying without coordinating with y'all. We don't wanna run the risk that we would be down there saying something that has been updated because y'all have gotten new information or had to make different directions, and so that's what we're gonna do. Now, I, I've gotta go back, and then I'll finish. We don't have a dollar amount on Bozeman Road, and let, let me explain what we were doing there. We thought that number may evolve, and when I say that, higher or lower, and so instead of plugging a number right there, at this point, we just wanna say it's a priority and that we will be asking for funds there, and then as y'all get in a better position to tell us exactly what that number would be, then we don't have to worry about adjusting it up or down, it can be the number we need to be before we go to the legislature, if that makes sense. And, and at this point, if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to take them. I, I do appreciate each one of y'all taking time to meet with us, uh, we enjoy those meetings, we feel like they're very beneficial, not only for our membership, but also in keeping the county coordinating and moving in the right direction, and we do appreciate y'all's leadership on that.
Phil, um, when it comes to coordination, have y'all been able to work our lobbyists into the discussions, far as everybody standing on the same page?
I, I, I have, and, and I have been coordinating with, uh, Michael Goode on that, uh, I will certainly coordinate with any other people that y'all ask me to, uh, and, and certainly we're always willing to do that, because as I said, we don't wanna be down there sending conflicting messages when, uh, w- we just don't know at that point in time. So we, we will continue to do that all along.
And preliminary discussions I've had with our representation is, they're looking for a shovel in the ground, uh, on Bozeman and/or, or any of the projects, and I know, I think you spoke with Stan over at Neil Schaefer, was he able to confirm a hard date on when there will be a shovel in the ground on Bozeman Road?
And I, Stan told me that he was still working on a package to provide to y'all and to be able to provide to the legislative delegation, uh, he told me to expect that this week, uh, you know, I, our hope would be is that we can have it by December fifteenth, because I think that's the key date for us, where we can provide that information, again, with the agenda, we've got all of our legislative delegation, and then into any other legislators that may be there that day. But, but to us, that's the important date, if we can get it by then. I, I don't think it's finished yet, I have spoken to him, uh, and he did tell me he was working on it to finish it up, uh, and like I said, we will continue to work with Stan, we'll continue to work with, with Michael, or anybody else that y'all want us to work with to accomplish the goals, uh, that we're all trying to accomplish for the county.
Okay.
Phil, I appreciate, uh, we do, we appreciate the effort that you, the Business League, Jan and Ray, and others put into this, uh, 'cause it is, it's a lot of time, a lot of effort, uh, and, and you're right, you know, you could've had ten, ten items on this page, and they all would've been good items, but I think you definitely got the top, the top items on this list for the county to look and move forward and to support, whether it's the cities, counties, or whomever in Madison County, to support their efforts with broadband, water and sewer, and with Bozeman as well.
And, and that, Gerald, that's an excellent point. A lot of people gave us a lot of great ideas and a lot of really priorities, for whatever reason, uh, but we felt like we really needed to keep it on a smaller list, because then we'd become less effective. I think one year, y'all remember, we had ten, uh, and at that point in time, I promised everybody we would never have ten again. We do have, uh, what we call a watch list, where we, we monitor things that are going on down there, where we can report back to y'all if y'all don't know it, or if somebody picks up the phone and calls us, and I'm gonna use this as an example, uh, Mayor McGee has a priority of Commerce Park Drive, and we've told Mayor McGee that we're gonna support his efforts there, but that is more of a localized effort than it is a county-wide effort, and that's really where our priorities were at this point in time. And, and if you look at him, one of his top priorities is water and sewer, and it's on this list, so it, it is a, a global list, in our opinion.
Well, that's good.
All right.
Stan's here now, if anybody has a question for Stan.
Phil, and Jan, and Ray, thank y'all for donating your time.
Do we need to acknowledge the presentation? Motion to acknowledge the presentation?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
But I also would like to make a motion to have a resolution with these three items as our priority items as well.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I be looking for the invitation on the fifteenth, Jan.
Listen, you have it on your desk, and actually, actually, it's the sixteenth.
That's the eighth.
The sixteenth?
It's the sixteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Thursday, Thursday, the sixteenth.
Thursday, the sixteenth at Butler Snow.
It's, it's always been Wednesday, that's why I've got the fifteenth, so I'm glad.
Oh, this is the eighth here.
That's the, that's, that's the lunch.
Oh, wait, that's, okay, I'm sorry, that's for this lunching on Wednesday, but you will receive it this morning.
You will get that, I will promise all five of y'all.
The other one for the sixteenth.
It is the sixteenth at eight o'clock at Butler Snow.
Eight, eight o'clock in the morning.
Hey, you, you, you put it hard on North, North End, man, but I'm gonna make it.
Yeah.
Paul, you, you can drop by and pick me up, and we'll go together.
We gonna make it there, they ain't about to come by your house.
I think I told y'all, we can get you a room at the hotel.
Mr. President, I do see, uh, Stan back there in the back, and I, no need for him to come up for my part, but I do know that, uh, he is working on this, uh, sheet of paper, one or two sheet of paper as far as Bozeman Road, and we should have it this week, from my understanding, so, thank you, Stan.
All right. Okay, thank you all, all right.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Mr. President, there are no, uh, others signed up for concerned comments, none have signed up this morning to speak.
Okay, I think next on the, uh, then we would have the consent items.
Before you get to that, the public hearing item, there was supposed to be a public hearing, you did schedule a public hearing for today, that public hearing, uh, was related to the abandonment of Swamp Road.
Yeah.
That public hearing did not get noticed, could I get you, could I ask you to reset that public hearing for the second meeting in January, which I believe is gonna be January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two?
Can we get a motion on that?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I will advise you that there are parties here today who both want the road abandoned and parties who do not want the road abandoned.
Right.
But, uh, I think that's a topic for January seventeenth, okay?
I think it's a topic that they better look at, what's out there, for being the supervisor to represent that area.
Okay.
All right, under consent, Mr. President, item number.
We'll get the fact, I just tell the board that, uh, the board members at the last meeting, there was a gentleman to hear, the veteran, who had filed homestead exemptions in two counties, the USB to, to read it, I mean, look, look into it, and I did that, and unfortunately, it was his error, it was not an error of the county government. So really, there's nothing you could do. I thought he was gonna come here today, but he's not here, so if you could just authorize me to reach out to him and tell him, unfortunately, nothing you could do, uh, that if you could just work with Texas and repave what he's supposed to, then.
Motion.
Nothing you could do.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Take care, mate.
Okay, it'll, it'll be the following Tuesday. Uh, Mr. President?
Yeah.
I've been advised that seventeenth is a national holiday, uh, so it will be the eighteenth, which will be Tuesday, uh, of January, so.
Okay.
Uh, I, any, anything scheduled for that Monday holiday automatically happens on the Tuesday follow, following.
Can you show that to the minister?
Yes, sir.
For that, okay, thanks.
All right, under consent, sir, okay, uh, I, I need to withdraw item number fifteen, the clerk of the board report, the incorrect attachment was, uh, shown with that, so we'll take care of that on next agenda. And then on item number twenty-six, the question has arisen related to charges on a hotel folio, uh, there are personal charges that, uh, an employee placed on their, uh, hotel folio, and I do have, uh, evidence here that they paid for it with their private credit card, uh, that I'm going to make sure that the clerk has, uh, to, uh, put in their documents for this meeting.
Good, good. Okay, now, uh.
Make motion, blue, the consent item, all except the item Sheldon just said.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then. Now, we have supervisors, uh, business items, supervisor Griffin.
All right. Mike, this gonna be something, uh, basically, we'll be asking you. I discovered, I think, last week, the week before last, that the Health Department has stopped issuing, uh, permits for treatment plant on air property, and that directly affect all Madison County property, the whole state, if the rules are the same. I would like you to call the right, uh, whoever at the Health Department and get the exact, uh, ruling of what they're saying about not issuing permits on air property. Cause what I call air property is, is my brother, if I own property with my brother, and my son more to put it out there, he can't put it out there unless we divide their stake up, and we might not wanna divide their stake up. Now, that's what I call air property.
That's it.
Uh, see, do they have a different direction, I mean, definition of air property?
Okay.
And, and this is something, if you will, put on your top list, cause I got people out there waiting right now, trying to put them over home on, on air property, and they won't issue them a permit to get a treatment plan.
Okay.
They won't make that motion.
Make that motion, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, business items.
Mr. President, Rosalind Seabrook was scheduled to address Sunset Hill and Sunny Brook, but we have Mr. Great here from Sunny Brook, uh, in place of Rosalind, uh, Seabrook.
That's good.
Good morning, uh, my name's Merle Gray, I'm the Executive Director at Sunny Brook Children's Home, and we are applying for tax exempt status on some properties that we've got out in Flora on Highway twenty-two. Uh, one of those, we have previously had the exempt status, but upon advice of our attorneys, we shifted some properties into LLC, so we have to reapply, and then one of the pieces is adjacent and surrounded by our properties, but a recent purchase.
Okay.
Only, only concern, I'm not concerned that, uh, they qualify for tax exemption, there is a concern, though, that we have a form, and it requires certain documents, and we, at number eleven, it says, are you nonprofit, are you incorporated, you say yes, then number twelve says, if yes, attach a copy of the chart of the Mississippi State, and I don't see that.
Okay, I did not submit the paperwork myself, I have a copy of our, a letter of, um, uh, determination from the IRS, if, if that's sufficient, but you.
Yes, this is Mississippi State.
You need Mississippi State, okay, so we just need, we need to get that form into you.
If, when the churches ask for nonprofit, they give that.
Right.
So, I mean, it's up to the board, it's, it's qualified, but it's, it's not, the application incomplete.
Well, we, we need a completed application.
I agree.
Is anybody with, with.
I agree.
Okay, so, um.
What you want, do you need to work your mind to get it complete?
Yeah, I mean, uh, it's, since all we're talking about is, is the completed application, I would suggest that we might wanna entertain a motion that they would get their, um, exempt status, once they complete the completed application.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, we just need the application completed. So I'll make that motion, uh, that we get, uh, all the, uh, completed application as we are accustomed to getting, and, and, uh, once that has been approved by the attorney, once he sees it, uh, we'll pass it on to the, uh, tax assessor.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. President, the only thing that I would ask is that, uh, once you get it, just email it to our administrator or our attorney.
Once approved by the attorney, I'll put it back on consent.
Right.
The completed application, so there will be a final, uh, determination in your board minutes.
Yeah.
Right.
That will be, uh, in our, what, we have a last meeting in this month?
We do. We have another meeting.
Yeah, we got one more, yeah.
We have another meeting, so, just to put it on the consent, once you get it, and then that way it'll be taken care of.
So get it in quick.
Okay. All right, then, is, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Okay.
Trace that.
Trace that, yeah, Trace, okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, we have next, uh, Patford Medical Services.
Are we skipping forty-six?
Good morning, how are y'all doing?
Good morning.
I'm Mike Seymour, I'm the Chief Medical Officer for Patford EMS, and we're asking the county to, um, to add advanced EMT to our contract. As you may know, there are considerable challenges, we face some, we're glad to be here, number one, and, uh, we have faced some unique challenges in the advent of the COVID crisis, and paramedic shortages have become, um, uh, a problem for us, and, uh, we spent about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars last year sending EMTs and paramedics to school, yet we still have a shortage, and this is across the nation, this isn't unique just to Madison County, and so we're asking that advanced EMT be added to our contract so that we can use those in the county as well.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. President, I do, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On this, right, quick, like.
Yes, sir.
I know that we've met.
Yes, sir.
And y'all have met with the City of Ridgeland and working on an agreement.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, what's, what's the update on that agreement with the City of Ridgeland?
I believe.
Went, went to them Friday, uh, with the city attorney and fire chief, and they were, they were drafting an MOU.
Okay, so, so that looks like it's gonna be signed, sealed, the day tomorrow, something that nature?
Yes, sir.
And also, you was talking about paramedics, our contract today says that there will be a paramedic on each call, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And what you're asking today is for, they may not be, or what you're saying is, they may not be a paramedic on each call, unless it is definitely needed.
That's correct, yes, sir.
I'm, I'm kindly reading.
Yes, sir.
Between with our conversations.
So we can, we can use an advanced EMT in the place of the paramedic, yes, sir.
Yeah, and they definitely assured it, there's, there's no doubt, appreciate y'all coming.
Yes, sir.
But how many paramedics will that leave for Madison County? I mean, how many, how many do y'all have for Madison County, or will have a certain number that will be here in Madison County, because I know you're not gonna leave us with zero.
Oh, absolutely not, no, 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 no.
At, at the present time, the Madison County Corps of Ambulances are full staff of paramedics.
Right.
Right now, the corps ambulances are.
Okay, and so if you would, just email us sometime this week, just saying that it will get no lower than a certain number for Madison County.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm not sure what that number is, but if you would, but appreciate y'all working with us on this and.
We appreciate y'all working with us, and it's.
And, uh, also would like to have an update in three months on where you are with the, uh, paramedics, cause we would like to get back to where our contract is today.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, then, now, we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
President, Mr. Marion, you may remember just a moment ago, Board Attorney Espy made a reference to the gentleman from last meeting, Mr. Marion has, uh, has arrived at the meeting, would you like to talk to him now?
Yeah, the, the, this, uh, that'll save, uh, our attorney some time.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Marion. Uh, I think you, you, your problem was you filed homestead in two different counties, right?
Yes, sir.
I think our attorney has been researching that, and he can answer, uh, your questions as to what we can do, which I think we found nothing. Could you talk to him about that?
Uh, they asked me to look into your matter.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, as you explained, about a homestead exemption, uh, in, uh, Madison County, and in, in Butler, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And the, uh, State Revenue Department is asking now for clawback, you know, to recover from that you should have paid on tax exemption. Uh, we, uh, you asked us for some forgiveness.
Yes, sir.
And unfortunately, they can offer the forgiveness, because it was an error made not by the county, but by you, it was your error. I know you didn't, it, it was not a knowing error, it, it, you know, they know that you didn't know the law, that you can't get a homestead in two counties at the same time, but it was an error, but because it wasn't our error, meaning the county's error, we really unauthorized to offer the forgiveness, so, uh, made a recommendation that they, uh, we, they're sorry you did this, but there's not any assistance that county could offer you at the moment, so you would, I believe it was two thousand dollars or somewhat.
Three thousand.
Three, okay, well, unfortunately, they, we can't forgive it, because it was your error in, uh, in it, so, they, they're sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, can't get a reduction or nothing?
No, I mean, it's, it's, you know, everybody pays, everybody pays the taxes, and, uh, And, uh, so they can't, they give you a reduction. They thought of other reduction. So, we've, uh, I've communicated with the, uh, Chancellor Clerk on it. They're well aware of it, Ronnie Lott's office. And, uh, we've discussed it and they really can't.
Okay.
All right.
What about helping me out with making a payment plan or something? Yep, well, Ronnie, they help payment plan?
Ronnie, why don't you meet with him later on today and work with him?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll do whatever we can, but it may not be much. There's nothing we can legally.
Anything to help, Mr. Espy, you know?
Okay then.
Uh, thank you. So what I need to do from here? Give you a card?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Okay then. All right. Okay, we have next, um, Alliance Fire District.
Darian. Isn't that Darian? Alliance Fire District. Kerry?
Mm-hmm, Kerry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kerry Miniger. Uh, I'm here representing the Alliance Fire District this morning, uh, along with Mr. Andrew Hughes. He's one of our board members. Uh, wanted to come and give y'all an update, uh, where we are. Uh, we've had two board meetings, uh, both very, uh, good board meetings. Uh, Mr. Hughes and myself met with the fire chief from Canton and from Gluckstat, uh, to discuss, uh, providing fire protection to the mega site. And, uh, during the meeting, uh, with both fire chiefs, uh, they both expressed, uh, the interest to work, uh, together, uh, to provide, uh, fire protection to the mega site, which I was, uh, very pleased with, with that. They, uh, they both brought that up in the meeting themselves. And, uh, so, um, Mr. Hughes and myself went back, uh, to our board and, uh, gave them an update on that meeting. And our board, uh, I think was very pleased with that. And so, uh, our intention is to move forward, uh, along that line, uh, with, uh, both, uh, Canton Fire Department and Gluckstat Fire Department working cooperatively together, uh, to provide fire protection to the mega site. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity for both departments, uh, to come together, work closer together. I think that will benefit not only the mega site, uh, but, uh, Madison County as a whole. I think it will set a very good example, uh, to everybody in the county that, uh, you know, you can, you can work together, uh, for the greater good. And, um, you know, I, um, talked to, uh, Mr. Deason out at Makita about it. And, uh, I think it's gonna be a, a positive thing for him too, when he talks to people about coming to the mega site, that he not only has one fire department to cover it, but he has two fire departments to cover it. So we have redundant, uh, uh, protection for that area. Uh, so, uh, that is, uh, we're gonna be working, uh, very hard to, uh, get that moved forward. Uh, I'm gonna be asking, uh, the attorney to, to work with us to prepare the, uh, fire protection contracts, uh, to, uh, to take care of that. The truck, um, is located at the EOC, um, and, uh, some of the board members, um, met with the, uh, county fire coordinator, uh, spent the day out there unboxing equipment and doing an inventory, uh, on all the equipment that was ordered, uh, to ensure everything was in order. Uh, we have a few items that are, we're still waiting to come in, but they should be coming in shortly. Uh, I met with, uh, Mr. Vance about the building, uh, about improving some lighting on the building and a couple of other items that, uh, he's helping us with over there. So, uh, we're moving along on that. Uh, our, uh, plan is next that we will, uh, have a meeting with, uh, both fire chiefs, uh, and their command staff and sit down and go over some, uh, standard operating procedures, uh, that we'll use, uh, to ensure that everything runs smoothly, uh, going forward.
Okay. Thank you, Kerry. I appreciate you volunteering your time to help out with this.
Well, it's been a, a combined effort of, of all the board members, uh, working together to, to make this happen. And, uh, and I, I think it's gonna be really good for the, for the county, so.
Kerry, I know that, um, Amazon is planning on opening in January.
Correct.
We will have fire service protection.
That is our full intention for us to, to get busy and, uh.
Okay.
We have a, we have our next board meeting tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, so we're gonna take some steps hopefully tomorrow, uh, and, and work with Mr. Espy to, to facilitate that and get that going and, um, meet with the fire chief. So we're, we're on board and ready to go, ready to go, so.
And I really liked the, the words you used, working together, cause that's, that's where we need to be.
Right.
So we appreciate your effort and, and the fire board's effort in making this happen along with the fire chiefs.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question though.
Yes, sir.
Um, in terms of fire departments working together, I, I know we've always had agreements where one backed up the other when it's here. Um, I'm still trying to wrap my arms around the working together portion of, of, of this. How do you see that, um, in terms of if a nine-one-one call goes out?
Well, the, the way that, uh, it would work would be that, uh, both departments, it'd be similar to what they call automatic, uh, aid. Uh, if nine-one-one call comes in, uh, then the sheriff's office would dispatch both departments, uh, at the same time. Uh, so they'll, they'll both be responding. And, uh, of course, if one gets there before the other and sees that the other one's not needed, we'll use our radio communications to relay that information, uh, you know, that either come on or you're not needed or whatever. Uh, so it'd be not unlike, uh, if you have multiple stations in a city that respond to a call. Uh, if you kind of think about it on that level, even though it's two different departments, think about it, if you had one department and you had multiple stations responding to a commercial or industrial fire, uh, that's how it would be designed to work.
Sounds good.
You, you see the, uh, the chiefs had already agreed to this?
Right. When we met with them, Mr. Andrew and, uh, uh, Mr. Hughes and myself met with them, they both brought up on their own, uh, that, uh, we look at them working together, uh, to provide fire protection to the site.
I, that, that working together, um, meant what you said it meant.
Well, that's one reason that we planned to meet with the chiefs and their command staff, uh, to sit down and get to the nitty gritty, so to speak, uh, and, and work out everything. Because the plan, uh, what the, the, uh, fire board has talked about, the plan is, is that these two departments will work together, uh, on everything. Uh, they will train together on the truck. Uh, they'll, uh, do, uh, inspections of the site together. Uh, if, you know, for instance, if the truck needs to be washed, Canton can send a couple of guys, Gluckstat send a couple of guys up. They'll work together, wash the truck. So what we're, what we're trying to do is set a system up where they're gonna work hand in hand. Uh, so that when, uh, when they respond, it's a seamless operation, uh, and, uh, it'll, it'll go very smooth. And like I say, it's a great opportunity, I think, and I, and hopefully I think both fire chiefs probably see that. Great opportunity for them to even build a stronger relationship between departments, which will benefit both of them also. Because it, it'll take a, a burden off ea- either one of them really. Uh, you know, if, if one of them's tied up, we know the other one's going. And that's the important thing, is that we want to make sure that, uh, we have somebody responding to that site.
And Kerry, these details would be worked out in the contract.
Right.
And that's, uh, that's what I'm hearing you say.
Right. And that's why we're gonna meet with, with both departments and, and get those details.
Right.
Uh, worked out. Uh, I've worked on some standard operating procedures as a draft, something that we can use to, to start from, to work with, uh, and then adjust those with their input.
Yeah. And I'd like to make sure I see those details after y'all get it worked out. But just to say this and then hope y'all can work it out. Um, I'm kind of real concerned about, uh, emergency management building is in the city limits to Canton. And the mega site is in the response area of Canton. Why would we want to invite another department in to work together? They can do like they always traditionally. They back up the other department. Uh, after that, uh, department that's within the response area responded and got there, they need backup. Then they call for backup. Uh, you trying to say they working as a blended fire department? Is that what you're saying, Kerry?
Basically, yes. Uh, and the way, you know, um, the, the mega site fire district was created. It's a separate fire district and the board was appointed. And, uh, you know, it's my feeling and I think hopefully probably the feelings of the other board members that our job is to provide the best fire protection service, uh, that we can to the mega site. That's, that's our focus. That's our concern is the mega site.
All right.
And that's what our responsibility is.
I'd be interested in see how that worked out.
Okay. Uh, you have something to say, Andrew?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm, uh, Andrew Hughes, one of the commissioners on the board. There are some things that I have.
I could look, uh, there you go.
There are some things that we do have to work out. There are some things that we do have to go back and revisit and make sure we're doing it on a practicality basis. So that's, I talked with Kerry, uh, so let's revisit these things so we make sure we doing what's best for all parties involved. So we do have some things that we do have to work out. So we in the preliminary stages, the very beginning of the prelimi- preliminary stages. Give us our meeting tomorrow and then we will let you know how we come out from that point on.
One, one thing that I would like to say, and I hear you very clear, work out what's best for the mega site.
I said all parties involved. I meant them too.
Now, mega site is the party. That is what we're here for with fire protection, is the mega site. That, that is our number one.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, that's not number one issue. Yes, it has to be good for all parties. No doubt. It has to be. But we really just wanna, we want to make sure the fire protection is focused on the mega site.
I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, Kerry, Kerry, are you gonna stick around for the AutoZone or you wanna?
Okay, um, Darren. Good morning, board of supervisors.
Good morning, Darren. Uh, this morning, I'm here, uh, to provide you with a brief update related to our Madison County, uh, watershed-based stormwater management program, um, in which the board authorized Wagner to begin this effort back in November of two thousand and twenty with a projected fifteen-month schedule, uh, to, uh, implement this effort or do the assessment over the course of fifteen months. Uh, since then, uh, since we began, uh, we've met with Madison County representatives and representatives of each municipality, uh, within the county to identify, uh, what we're calling deficient areas, uh, related to drainage and to conduct our own, our own field investigations of these areas, uh, countywide. Our objective of this was to analyze each one of these areas through, uh, a holistic approach and not a, not from a, uh, specific spot or specific area, but a holistic approach of addressing, uh, drainage issues throughout the county. So where we are today, uh, as it relates to our preliminary assessments, uh, we found that thirty-seven sites are considered problematic, or we're considering problematic, uh, countywide. Of these thirty-seven sites, twenty-five of these sites are within city limits within, uh, Madison County. And the other twelve sites are located in the unincorporated areas of the county. We took these sites and ranked them from what we've identified as low, medium, and high, uh, priorities based on, uh, looking at what causes potential hazards that pose threats to health, safety, and welfare of the communities and the surrounding areas where these problematic sites have been identified. So when we, when we began this effort, we identified that thirty-three watersheds exist throughout the county. And of these thirty-three watersheds, uh, the sites that we've identi- identified as problematic sites, seven, um, seven of those sites, uh, are located within, I'm sorry, those sites are located within seven of the thirty-three watersheds that we've identified. So those thirty-seven sites, problematic sites that we've identified, uh, they are located within seven of the thirty-three watersheds that we've identified throughout, uh, Madison County. The majority of these, uh, problematic sites are located in the Bear Creek watershed and the Tilda Bow watershed. So along with the preliminary data that we've collected, uh, we developed, um, uh, and connected to these sites, a conceptual, uh, opinion of probable cost of what it would take from a funding standpoint to address these drainage issues, uh, throughout these areas that are spread out over the county. And that, uh, conceptual cost, uh, to date is at one hundred and nineteen million dollars. Um, and again, this is at our preliminary, uh, stages as it relates to our assessments and the data that we've, uh, collected. So as we, as we proceed forward, one of the things that we've done also, uh, with this number in mind, we've identified, uh, what could be potential funding sources that the county could use to help, uh, aid in, uh, funding these improvements. And, uh, two of those sources have been through, uh, the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service. And another potential funding source could be through the FEMA, uh, BRIC program, which BRIC stands for Building Resilient Infrastructure, uh, in Communities. So these are two funding sources that, uh, communities can use to help fund, um, drainage projects that support, uh, stream bank stabilization, um, uh, along creeks. And also, um, that support, uh, flood mitigation projects as well. So again, like I said, this is where we are, uh, as it relates to our preliminary data. So we're continuing to proceed and we're refining, uh, these numbers. Uh, we definitely anticipate as we move forward, we anticipate there'll be some other sites that would be added to what we have so far. So this number, uh, could and probably will change. Uh, like I said, this was a, a fifteen-month effort, so we're still, uh, tracking good in terms of when we will have this complete, which I think fifteen months from November puts us around the March-April twenty-twenty-two timeframe. Uh, so that's where we are right now. And so basically our next steps, uh, in addition to refining what we have, is developing an action plan and an implementation plan, uh, that the county can use as it relates to planning these improvements over, uh, a five to ten-year period. So, uh, that's where we are, uh, to date.
Chair Kerry, can I give some context for this meeting?
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to give the board an update and provide some context as to why Mr. Warren is here today. So recently, uh, if not all of you, most of you had meetings with wagon engineering on the watershed plan. They finished their study. They, they've informed you in person about the watershed issues countywide. And I also had a chance to have that briefing. So after that briefing, knowing that they mentioned a hundred and fifty million dollars is what it's gonna cost to get everything mitigated. Uh, I took it one myself to have a really good meeting last week. And the meeting was with the, uh, the Biden administration's nominee, top federal guy in, in the nation. Uh, in person, I met with him last week. Uh, he'd be the undersecretary for United States Department of Agriculture over NRCS. And he brought with him his successor, who's a state conservationist. The guy who approves all the conservation programs in the state of Mississippi. So we all three met. And I gave him a very quick briefing about what I had heard from Mr. Wagner's, or Mr. Darian's meeting with me. And I gave him a map that they produced, uh, which, which showed all the watershed issues in the county. You know, everything that, that he showed you in your meetings. I gave them the map. In particular, we talked about all the watershed problems impacting the city of Canton going west. Discussed that in depth. Also discussed, uh, the flooding on Parkway East. All the land on the east side of Parkway East, a lot of it on the other side is underwater. And we discussed. And we discussed how best the federal government could quickly intervene if they would to, to help us with those issues. And I got, uh, I received some, uh, you know, I would just say, um, not promises, but action. So they asked us to send them a letter next week and that that would be this week. Send them a letter this week asking for assistance from the USDA on these problems. And that would be a motion that one of you would have to make, that, uh, you would send an official letter to the, uh, the, uh, USDA unsecretary. Well, he's been nominated, he's been through his confirmation, and that was one hold by one senator from Alaska that does not involve anything with him. So that'll be rectified, I'm sure, in the ensuing weeks, but then he'll be the top guy. But the state conservationist is there in place now and he asked for a letter from the Madison County Board of Supervisors to him, asking for assistance with watershed issues in the county. And then he said he would very quickly in the next week delegate somebody from his office to come and inspect these issues, Canton, Parkway East, or wherever, you know? And that's why we asked Mr. Wa- Warren to come today to give you, you know, uh, an update so you can make this motion so we can get the, the letter out. It's important to do it quickly because the bipartisan infrastructure bill has passed, this trillion-dollar bill, and the monies are in transit to the state of Mississippi. And we want to get to the head of the line. We want to get our projects inspected and in the process of being approved so we could move forward now before, uh, eighty of the one, eighty-one of the counties get involved. So that's why he's here, that's why he's giving you this report. We've already met with the officials. Uh, they gave us the green light insofar as the lease coming and looking at it and then they'll decide how best they can, uh, help us.
Can we get a, a motion on the letter?
Make a motion.
Is the letter, the letter's ready?
Uh, I believe the letters are ready, so we can send it tomorrow.
Got the letter?
Yes, sir.
Uh, who needs to sign it?
Mr. Griffin, let me, let me, uh, let me just make the motion and then that way I think it all will be.
Yeah, you make the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make motion for Mike to work with Wagner Engineer, to work, uh, with the letter, getting the letter in proper form to be able to send to, uh, USDA?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
This week.
Yeah, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I'll be ready to sign.
Darren, I got a question for you. Um, I'm assuming you're as much of an expert as anybody in this county on flooding and watershed. There's a question that's come up about the new AutoZone location being in a floodplain and the dirt that's being hauled in is going to push water further out into people's yards and whatnot when heavy rains come. Um, and I need an, an expert opinion on how we can help mitigate this. Um, obviously we want growth, we want AutoZone here, but, um, what we can do to, to help the people in the surrounding area out. Um, so are you familiar with that area? Did y'all's study include the, the watershed or the, the floodplain around Glug Stat Road?
It did, and as it relates to flood, flood, um, uh, flood zones, uh, I think as it stands now, uh, and with the county ordinances, you can, uh, build, uh, in a flood zone, you can't build in a floodway. So as a part of our efforts, one of the things that we're looking at and assessing is, uh, ordinances and what type of improvements can be made there, uh, you know, to, uh, not necessarily restrict growth, but make sure that nothing is done that contributes to, uh, already existing flooding issues. So that's something that, uh, you know, we can speak with you, uh, one-on-one, um, a little more in detail about, uh, when you have the time available. So as we're moving forward, we can make sure that, you know, nothing is overlooked, you know, as it relates to, uh, any concerns that you may have as we're finalizing our reports.
Okay. Well, I guess what I was looking for was in this particular situation, is there something we can do in that particular flood zone, bigger culverts or clean it out or, you know, something to help so they can move forward with their building and we can, um, help the neighbors out.
She's saying something right, like right, right now.
He's looking directly at that site, um, and, and making sure that that site does not impact, um, downstream or upstream from it because sometimes certain developments become a brick, become a dam and sometime it, they, they just.
Yes, sir.
Water run too fast. And I think that was the main reason we started this watershed study was to look and see how the, all this development that's going on in Madison County was affecting upstream and downstream from it.
Correct, correct.
Where is the, the, that, that location? I don't know.
There was a pop-up restaurant on Glug Stat Road for a year, uh, trailer, and he, he moved off the space and, uh, it's, uh, there's a all-state mini-storage next, there's an all-state and a mini-store, there's a vacant, little bitty vacant lot.
Yeah.
They've got to bring in an enormous amount of dirt, it's going to re-divert water, I think three-quarters of the lot's in the floodplain. So I'm just worried that if we bring in all the dirt and push, it's already flooding people's yards in heavy rains, I want to make sure we're not going to get into somebody's home, um, whatnot. So, uh, Tim, are you familiar with the area?
I, I am, as of this morning.
You got any suggestions? Cause I don't want to stop, I want to go on and.
The only way to, to totally mitigate any new dirt in a floodplain is to take the fill that you're bringing into that floodplain out of that floodplain in a different location. That's the only way to keep the, the water level. The more dirt you put in, into an area, your water level's going to rise. So that, that's the way you mitigate it.
You got any suggestions?
Um, I mean, there's, that's a big, a big floodplain, so, you know, anything upstream that they could take care of would, would help. I haven't looked at it, you know, the first I've heard about this was when I talked to Mr. Miniger this morning about it. So I can definitely look into it though.
Okay. What I'm looking for, an avenue that we can go on and let them do what they need to do, but at the same simultaneously try to solve this issue.
Right, and I'll have to go back and look at our ordinance. You know, Scott is actually the floodplain administrator for the county, so he's the one that controls that, but I'll get with Scott on it too. I believe he's not here today, but I'll get with him and, uh, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Okay. Well, Mike, what should, uh, when they come up here, what, what should my motion be so we can do this kind of simultaneously? Cause I don't want to hold them up.
With this.
On their building, yeah.
Well, I mean, they're going to look at all the watershed issues in the county, so the motion's already been made. And we didn't, we, we talked about Canton, we talked about Parkway East, but we didn't exclude that to just those, so.
I think, I think, Mike, I think what he, but what Trey's interested in is just this.
Location.
Location where AutoZone's going to go and the amount of dirt they're going to bring in and the effect it's going to have to, so the, the neighboring properties. And, you know, the only way you can determine that, right, now some, you guys have some engineering done on site, uh, that will determine, they'll have some, like Tim just, is just hearing about it this morning, so.
Mr. President, a lot of that is, a lot of that will happen as the site moves forward. Those steps will come into play and drainage will definitely come into play.
Sure, and we look at that at that time.
Supervisor Baxter, that's, that's when you take care of the issue.
Tim, what's, uh, what's your recommendation on this particular?
Can I, can I get back with you on that? I don't want to give you a recommendation, I want to sit down and actually look at it before I.
Yeah.
Say something.
Well, I guess what, what my, I'm trying not to delay the project, so.
What? I understand, I'll get on it quickly.
Okay. All right. Well, they're going to be up here in a few more agenda items.
Well, I don't know if I can look at it that quickly.
Okay. All right, let's do it.
Okay then. Okay, Darren, thank you very much for the presentation and get me the letter and I'll, I can sign it.
Do we need to know if whatever it is, or what? You didn't give us a report, Doug. So we need to know if that report?
Well, we, we got, he, he had given us a real report, we're going to get a report at the end of the, uh, it was just this, like, county interim where we are type thing. Uh, it was basically brought up just to go ahead and get that letter.
All right.
So we're going to do the letter. I think we can move on from there to our next person is going to be our building and grounds director.
Danny Lee replacement.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I have three items on building and grounds today. Uh, first up's the Madison County Firing Range. Uh, we were working with our architect Dale Part, uh, Dale Partners, they presented two options. After we reviewed these options with the Sheriff's Department, it's determined we'll go with the lower cost. Uh, the estimate for this is five hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Um, and we're looking for, once approved, we're expecting a couple of months for them to finish putting together the, uh, bid documents and be ready for bid. And I'm requesting authority to advertise for bids. The second item up is the park restrooms. Uh, this is again with Dale Partners. This is ninety percent complete. Uh, we're currently waiting on a, um, permeability test from the Department of Health. One of the restrooms will require a spray fill. Once that's conducted, uh, they're estimating two weeks to be ready to bid. So I'm also requesting, uh, authority to advertise for construction bids. And then the final, uh, item is playground and exercise equipment at Sulfur Springs Parks. Uh, we have a proposal from J H and H Architects to prepare plans and specs for this equipment at Sulfur Springs. Due to the, uh, dollar threshold, state law requires us to have an engineer and architect prepare these for bid. And that is all I have on the agenda.
Motion to approve all three.
Mr. President, I do have a couple of questions on item fifty-one.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, and I see that you have them to advertise all at one time. I, I would, uh, I would ask the board if we advertised to, for all at one time, but also separately as well.
Yes, sir. Uh, we, uh, I'm sorry, before I came in, that was presented as an option to either do one block for all restrooms or each restroom individually, uh, depending on what the board wants, that's what we'll ask them to do.
Okay.
Okay, and then that way we, just in case they come way over budget, we'll know what each individual restroom.
Yes, sir.
Would, would take. And also just a quick question in, on Rogers Park, um, did the city of Canton annex that area?
It's always been in the city of Canton. Rogers Park has always been in the city of Canton.
But it's a county park?
Yes, the agreement between, uh, Madison, uh, Canton Schools, Canton Schools and District Four Madison County where, um, Canton Schools turned that, uh, property over to, uh, District
Okay.
Twenty-five years ago. I remember because I was here. So, yeah, so it, it's, it's, it's a county park and it was, uh, done in District Four Madison County. And it is, um, that we have a lease, uh, perpetual that goes with it from, um, the Canton Public Schools, but that's who, that's where.
Why, why wouldn't the city have that lease, just from my knowledge? Since it's inside the city limits as far as?
Well, it's, it's, um, the city have their parks and that park, that park was done, um, by District Four Madison County and the school board owned the property and not the city. And I was the one that went to the school board and said, I'd like to build a park there.
Cause most of the county folks were right across King West Road.
It was, it.
But that's what I'm saying.
It was right at the edge of the city limits at the time.
Yeah, but I think the city is annexing.
They've annexed it.
Now.
Most of King Ranch right now.
Okay, you answered my question.
Yeah, but that's all. Okay, uh, we had a motion and a second to move forward. All of them say, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that's what the changes that Supervisor Stane brought up about breaking, bidding that two ways.
Yes, sir.
All right, I second it, uh, in case Ronnie didn't get that. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Where is Tim? Oh, there he comes. He was still there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got two items for you. First is the, uh, release the letter of credit for Coventry Part Two and accept the one-year maintenance bond for this development there through, they've got the surface course on it. So we ask that the roads become public and that, uh, we accept the one-year maintenance bond.
Did that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Last item I have is a request for payment for Bozeman Road to Colony Crossing Properties LLC for one hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Motion.
Yeah, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, before you sit down, can you meet with Shelton? And we've got to find an extra half a million dollars for the north side of Dewey's Road from the cut, from the roundabout to Stribling. Um, and, uh, you know, just try to locate the money and come back at the next board meeting.
Okay, I will talk to him. I said I'll be glad to talk to him.
Tim, before you run off, uh, can you check and, and give me a report back when you get there on the bridge, uh, on, on Sulfur Springs and the fence? Let me know what, what's going on with it.
All right, the fence, I can tell you they were going to start today, but with the rain, it's probably going to be tomorrow or the next day, but they were scheduled to be there this morning.
That's good. What, what about the bridge?
Bridge, we're still working with the manufacturer on a footing design. We should have that in the very, very near future. And once that, I'm hoping that we can keep that under fifty so that we don't have to go out for bid, that we can just do a two-quote project.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
You know when we're going to be paving on Dewey's, the south side?
Once we get through with the, uh, grading, we'll come, come right back in, right after that, uh, we'll do it through our term bid.
Think it'll be before Christmas? Carl wants a nice paved road so his family can drive right up there and get sleep.
I would love to tell you, but, uh, hopefully, no, it will not be before Christmas. I can.
Buy me about another half million, two now when you get to looking for that money.
That's what I was going to say as well. But anyway, when you find the first meeting, just look for the second meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I'll look for all of it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Supervisors, the next item on the agenda, Scott Weeks with Planning and Zoning. Scott had an emergency that he had to attend to, so, uh, Planning and Zoning Attorney Andy Clark is here.
Y'all didn't know y'all are in for such a treat this morning, did you?
Yeah, yeah.
Good morning, and before, uh, I get to these agenda items, just wanted to give you a, a really quick update on a couple of, uh, matters of litigation. Um, the first one, Teddy Lee is in Supervisor Baxter's district. Uh, that matter is set for hearing, uh, or trial, uh, on January the sixth, so that's upcoming. Um, and the second one, um, I'm happy to report, uh, was in Supervisor Banks's district. Uh, we tried it or had it heard back in, I don't know, July or August. Ms. Chantel Williams was a zoning violation for, uh, keeping livestock on her residential property. Uh, we were successful in obtaining a judgment, uh, and I actually have payment for that judgment. Um, we attached the, the judgment to her property, she sold the property and, uh, we recouped that. So, uh, not a ton of money, but y'all are looking for an extra half a million dollars. I'm fixing to put about five thousand in your hands, so doing my part.
That's a start.
But, uh, anyway, that was, that was some good news that I wanted to share. Uh, first item on the agenda, number fifty-five is to set an appeal hearing date, uh, January the twenty, January eighteenth. Uh, this is on a, uh, rezoning petition for Mr., uh, Prakash Agrawal. Uh, his petition was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission on, uh, November the eighteenth and they have appealed that decision, uh, so would ask that you all set that for the eighteenth of, of January twenty-twenty-two. That's a mistake on your.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Second matter is to acknowledge the Planning and Zoning draft minutes of our November the eighteenth meeting. I have those here for you that I will distribute very quickly.
Make a motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
All right, and the third matter, uh, has been discussed a little. And the third matter has been discussed a little bit already. The site plan for AutoZone. It's on the lot, as Supervisor Baxter stated, just west of 1078 Gluckstadt Road. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 18th of November. And just by way of trying to help, I did get a text from Scott a little while ago that this site is in the flood zone. It is not in the floodway. And at the meeting, Mr. Ray Flake, the engineer for the project, did acknowledge that there would have to be some hydraulics calculations that he would have to have approved by the county engineer as they go along, as Supervisor Steen said. So, Trey, you're asking for a way to help not hold them up. I would suggest that you could make a motion to approve, subject to the approval of county engineer, Scott Weeks as the inspector in planning and zoning that's over the flood, as Tim said. Floodplain administrator, thank you. If you so felt that appropriate.
Sounds good. That'll be my motion.
Is that second?
Second. For a little further discussion, make sure that I understand that it's that, basically, he's going to do the hydraulics, and it's going to be approved by Scott.
That's correct.
Saying that everything is okay.
That's correct.
As far as the drainage.
In conjunction... Right. In conjunction with Tim's approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Item 58 is a District Two issue. It's in a local agreement between the Canton City of Madison to help the city to improve 18 roads within the city. And we'll reimburse the cost, the supplemental cost of improving these roads, up to $952,000. It's in a local, it's a District Two issue, and I ask for recommendation.
Oh, motion?
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And it's not on the agenda, but you may want to know about District One. We had a District One interlocal prepared and ready today. It's not on the agenda because we submitted to the City of Madison, and they want to change some roads. But it wasn't clear which roads they want to change, and everything's got to be on the appendix to the interlocal before we can approve it. So, it's not on the agenda today. But it's ready as soon as we know which roads in District One, and we'll have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Shelton Vance?
Mr. President, on an item that has already been passed, I've been approached that someone wants to speak on the AutoZone issue. Do you wish to hear?
Sure.
Just real quick on that, where y'all were talking about that area. I would encourage the Board maybe to get Tim to look at that culvert that goes under Gluckstadt Road. I don't know if y'all have looked at the flood map. I can show it to you, but that culvert is a major choke point on the flow of water out of that whole flood area. So, maybe look at what needs to be done there going forward from that point downstream. Also, there is a large amount of silt in that culvert now. I don't know how much, but it's a lot. So, if that could be cleaned out, that would probably help the situation also.
Tim, y'all got the equipment to clean that culvert out?
Going into it, it probably might be done by hand unless it's big enough that we get a little mini accident or a blockhead. We'll take a look.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, item number 59. Madison County has historically appointed a Hazard Mitigation Committee. Many of the current appointees to that committee are no longer with Madison County, and it's time to update the report. So, I would like to recommend to you to appoint a Hazard Mitigation Committee of our Emergency Management Director, Albert Jones, Sheriff Randy Tucker, Tax Assessor Norman Kennedy, Planning and Zoning and Floodplain Administrator Scott Weeks, and then County Engineer Tim Bryan.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion for approval.
That's a good group second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 60. Now that we have that group, they need to do the five-year report for your approval. And I have a proposal here from Central Mississippi Planning and Development District to assist with preparing that report for a fee of $2,500.
Make a motion for approval? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I want to talk to you real quickly about a couple of items associated with the solid waste RFP, so I've got a handout for you. Garbage.
Garbage. Thank you. Like that one? Don't like that.
Right, Supervisors, when we were... When we obtained approval for advertising for solid waste collection and disposal services, we sat down with a couple of the companies that might be interested in bidding to talk to them about the technology changes. You know, all industries have technology changes. And what we learned is that there's really two major options that were available to Madison County that we're not currently using. One is called automated side-load pickup. And if you see the truck with the front of the truck facing the picture, you will see that this truck has an arm on the side where it is picking up the can and dumping the can. It's our understanding that we might be able to save as much as $300,000 on picking up garbage if we were to move to the automated side-load. Practically speaking, what this would mean is that everybody would be issued a can, and unfortunately, the cost of the can would run about $1.7 million a year. So, yes, the pickup...
Per year, you think?
That's per year. The pickup would reduce by about $300,000, but providing a can, maintaining the cans, replacing the cans, repairing the cans, would run about $1.7 million a year. So, if we did that, we would have to provide cans for everyone. They would put them near their end, the end of their driveway. The truck would come through and empty that can with less manual labor than they are currently using. Now, if...
Michelle?
Yes, sir.
I'm a little slow in math, but it sounds like to me that the $300,000 savings will be eaten up by a $1.7 million increase.
It would be. There is no doubt.
So, there's a $1.4 million increase.
That is correct.
Well, why would I entertain that?
Okay.
And that can be full like that picture down there. All that be left on the ground?
Okay, well, that's what I... That's my next statement. In the situation, and if you drive around Madison County, you will see that many people will put bags in a can, but there are also boxes or other bags to the side of the can. These boxes and bags would not get picked up in automated side-delivery because they pick the can up, empty the can, and move on. So, it's my recommendation to you that we move forward with the RFP, assuming the manual pickup that we currently use in our processes.
Thank you.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we hope to have that RFP published by the end of December and responses back in by the end of January. Okay, item... I'm sorry, Mr. President, did you vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Item number 62. We have a request from Citizen Services for a food distribution to be held at the Emergency Management Site, the Carl Banks Emergency Management Center out on Highway 22.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 63. In your last agenda back on November, on the last meeting in November, there was a scanning solution from Digitech Systems proposed. When we got ready to order that product, we realized that there was a portion of the quote that was submitted timely by Digitech that was not included with the documentation. It's... They are still the lowest and best bidder, but I need you to recognize the additional documents for installation of that software.
Make a motion... You need a motion for approval?
Yeah, man.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion for approval?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Sheldon, I've got a question for you.
Okay.
In limited amount of research I've done on the ARPA fund, what's the total amount of the funds the county got from the federal government?
I think our total is $20.6 million.
And due to income loss, there's a certain percentage that can be used for roads and bridges. Is that correct?
Right now, I think there's about $13 million that would be classified under the formula for lost revenue.
Okay. And what would be the process if we wanted to use that for a road? I mean, wouldn't it just be like general fund money? Or what's the process to go through to accessing the money legally under the Fed's approval?
The first thing that you would need to do would be to adopt the calculation that has been made for the lost revenue amount and have a Board determination of that lost revenue amount. And then, once you've done that, then you would begin to allocate that money to whatever your government purpose is that you wish to spend that money on.
And that includes paving, bridges?
I'd need to go back to look at the definition of government purposes, but my recollection is that government purposes includes anything for which you have authority to do.
Okay.
Supervisor Baxter, I understand there was a vote Friday in the House and Congress that was going to extend some of the uses that we can actually use for that money. I'm not sure how the vote come out. I know the Senate has already passed to where we could use it on infrastructure, roads, streets, drainage.
What I had heard, Supervisor Steen, and I do not know if it passed the House, but what I had heard is that that bill was going to provide for a percentage of your ARPA funds or up to $10 million to be used on whatever government project you wished to use it on.
Okay.
But I do not know the result of that vote. I have not heard that one. Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right.
The first item I have is number 64, which is approval of the budget amendments and the interfund cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next items, 65 through 67, includes approval of the general claims docket and two payroll dockets.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 68 is approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission for their per diem.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last item is number 69, approval of the fleet corps claim docket.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys want to take a section.
Yeah, every time you see them. Every time you see them, you think Executive.
One item for me.
That's the sheriff. Sheriff?
Just wait my turn.
Oh, well, I just pass right on by the red light because I know you have anything.
Just a couple of items. I've provided the clerk with a copy of the meal log for November 2021 for the feeding of inmate prisoners. If we could add, or you could acknowledge that and add it to your minutes.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Secondly, I've got a request that the Sheriff's Department be allowed to house a server for DCS, which is our NCIC provider. It's our state NCIC provider. In exchange for housing their server, and they are our current provider, in exchange for housing their server, they have agreed to give us access to that server as a backup system free of charge to the county. This is, you know, Mike's aware of it. We discussed it, and this is absolutely a win for us. In the event ours goes down at any point, it's a free backup for us with direct access. If you will allow that or acknowledge this letter, I will give that to the clerk as well.
Yeah, motion by Supervisor Baxter?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thirdly, just thank you and Cornelius. They came down, repaved our parking lot, did an excellent job. Really appreciate y'all doing that. That not only was it good for us, but it's good for the citizens. It gave us some extra parking for employees in the back, and it made some availability for parking in the front where visitors come and see us. So, thank y'all for doing that.
All right. Thank you. Old business. New business. Going to have a motion to go into...
Close termination.
Close determination.
We've got economic development. We've got right-of-way acquisition and lawsuit updates.
Okay.